Good evening. This is the first meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called a order. I ask that if you have your cellphones, please turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight invocation will be led by Pastor Dante Hickman of the Southern Baptist Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Hickman.
Shall we pray. Our Father and our God, how we thank you for the blessings of this day. We thank you for the privilege and the opportunity that we've had to gather. Thank you for our City Council President. Thank you for this deliberative and legislative body. We thank you for all of the established legacies and those who come with new learnings, new energy, and new insight. We pray for your guiding presence and that as this body would deliberate and lead that they would do so with a spirit of love and integrity and justice to improve our city. Have your way and bless this time on tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Hickman. I want to thank Pastor Hickman for the invocation. The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Bullock, Burnett, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, with the quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, our showcase is Rudy Chau on behalf of the Baltimore City Water Industry Career Mentoring Program. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is it on?
Yes. Mr. President, fellow council members, congratulations. Congratulations to the returning members and to the new members of the City Council. I'm honored and humbled as the first agency to showcase in front of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council on a program which we are very proud of. There are two pressing issues among many others which we face in DPW, namely the aging infrastructure and aging workforce. It is my pleasure to share with you the Baltimore City Water Industry Career Mentoring Program, a way to address in part on the aging workforce. We started this program because we saw a need to replace workers who are leaving the field due to normal attrition or retirement. We also saw this as an opportunity to reach out to our city's youth, developing their talents, and benefit the agency by bringing them onboard. We put these two challenges together and came up with a solution, a program that trains and educates local young adults in order to develop a pipeline of future workers. We partnered with Chesapeake Water Environment Association, a local member organization of the Water Environment Federation, and the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to ensure success of this program. This means finding experienced workers to serve as volunteers and mentors and providing program management and support. The program began as a pilot program back in 2015 and has been a great success. We have succeeded in equipping young workers with key skills needed to fill entry-level position in the water industry. Once the program participants completes the training and a paid summer internship, they are provided job in the industry. During the program, they train in DPW's lab where we test water, out in the field where we repair broken water mains, and in our customer support and services division where the mentoring program participants gain knowledge about our water billing system. Last year, fifteen students completed the program and are now all employed in the water industry. This year, we recognized the second group of eleven graduates with a luncheon which was held here in City Hall on November eighteenth. Mr. Thomas Phillips of the City Council's President's Office joined us at the luncheon and handed out certificates from the City Council President. The 2016 graduates are now all employed in full-time jobs. DPW is proud to have hired ten of those people as full-time workers, and we were very pleased that another participant was hired as a private industry by a private industry firm. Even better, the National Association of Sewer Service Companies had just awarded scholarships to seven participants from the 2015 and 2016 Baltimore City Water Industry Mentoring Program for training above what they have already received so they can earn Pipeline Assessment Certification, which costs eight hundred dollars per person. In addition, DPW always encourages and supports its workers who want to further their training so there will be even more opportunities for program graduates to learn others. So you see, the program is a win-win for everyone. We have provided a handout with information on the program. We also have a few of the participants with us here to share more with you about the program. I will call them if you would please stand. Mr. Robert Dorsey III, who is a 2015 graduate currently working in our Montebello Water Treatment Facility. Dominic Folwood, who is a 2016 graduate who is currently working for our Customer Support and Services Division. Mr. Charles Allen, 2016 graduate, who is now working in our meter shop. Justin Hamlet, 2015, he's right here, right next to me. He works in our Customer Support and Services Division. DeTron Davis, looks like he wasn't able to join us, but he was a 2016 graduate and who is currently working in our Patapsco wastewater treatment plant. And Sole Womojo, who is a 2016 graduate, who is employed by our Office of Compliance and Laboratory Services. Now, Mr. Hamlet will deliver a brief remark on behalf of the group to you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Rudy. Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, Director Chow. Good evening, Council President and members of the council. My name is Justin Hamlet. I am twenty-two years of age, and I live in the Bel Air Edison community.
That could be either one of them.
Okay. Well, I'm in your community. I am a 2015 graduate of the Baltimore City Water Industry Career Mentoring Program. Thanks to my experience in the water mentoring program, I am now employed full-time as a member, as a customer care analyst in DPW's Customer Service and Support Division in the Able Woman Building. In this position, I get to use my passion for numbers to analyze customers' bills to see if there's a problem and to find a solution to fix it. I am a graduate of Friendship Academy High School, and I also have completed other job programs in the past. But I must say, this program allowed me to take advantage of the opportunity to use my skills where they were most effective. However, I determined to take care of this challenge because it was six months without no pay, but I also took advantage of the free job training. So that also gave me advantage of just going through with it, thick and thin, and know you gotta face challenges and obstacles throughout life all the time. So it also gave me a better understanding of patience and also how to better myself far as building relationships throughout DPW and the Mayor's Office of Employment Development and the Chesapeake Water Association as well. Also, I also gained wonderful wisdom from the experience of workers from the water industry, from the inside, because by them coaching and mentoring me to find a better way and a better outlook on life, it also helped me to better my future and be more optimistic. So I would like to thank everyone that made this opportunity happen and the Mentoring Program come together, Director Chow, DPW, Baltimore City, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and Chesapeake Water Environment Association. Thank you.
Thank you, young man. Great program, Mr. Chow, and I'm glad that you gave us some information so that we can steer some more young people towards that program so they can gain full skills to be employed. It is the Council Customer Generalized Infocation Act for motion to generalize the prayer moved by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. At this point, we will now proceed with the organization of the council as provided in the council rules. The council rules are on the members' desks. Do I have a motion to approve the rules? Motion by Councilman Scott, seconded by Council Vice President Reissinger. All those in favor of adopting the council rules say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are adopted. Please note that the new committee assignments are on the members' desks. On the member desk is a letter requesting approval of the parliamentarian and other city council officers. Specifically, I request that you approve the appointments of the following individuals. I'm asking you to stand when I call your name. Mr. Michael L. Swift as parliamentarian of the city council. Mr. Liam F. Davis as chief clerk of the city council. Ms. Noctwana B. Austin as the executive secretary of the council.
Where's she at?
Okay. Ms. Nancy B. Ray as the general clerk of the city council. Mr. Paul B. Plymouth as the reading clerk of the city council. And Mr. Thomas Allen Phillips III as the sergeant-at-arms of the city council. Do I have a motion to approve these appointments? Motion by Councilman Henry, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting the council appointments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the appointments are confirmed. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings for the December fifth, 2016, city council meetings on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Dorsey, seconded by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving the journal say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on two to five of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council's Bill sixteen dash zero 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 one, sale of property eight twenty-three through eight twenty-five North Mount Street. Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interests and certain property located eight twenty-three through eight twenty-five North Mount Street and not obligated for public use and providing for special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council's Bill sixteen dash zero 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 two, city property naming the park located at nineteen hundred through twenty-one hundred Mount Royal Terrace Lady Baltimore Park. Ordinance for the purpose of naming the park located at nineteen hundred through twenty-one hundred Mount Royal Terrace Lady Baltimore Park. Sponsored President Young, Stokes, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council's Bill sixteen dash zero 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 three, city property naming Oliver Community Center Playground to Calvin B. Strug's Senior Playground. Ordinance for the purpose of changing the name of Oliver Community Center Playground located at thirteen fifty-one North Eden Street to Calvin B. Strug's Senior Playground. Sponsored President Young, Middleton, Stokes, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution sixteen dash zero 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 one R, the election of Donald Trump and Mike Pence as President and Vice President of the United States of America. Resolution for the purpose of opposing and condemning divisive and scapegoating rhetoric rooted in hate and prejudice and used, approved of, or encouraged by President-elect Donald Trump, targeting historically disenfranchised, marginalized, and oppressed groups. Sponsored Dorsey, Cohen, Middleton, Scott, Stokes, Burnett, Sneed, Henry, Bullock, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey, you want to speak to the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and thank you also to the co-sponsors of this bill. I felt it was an imperative, also speaking with several of my colleagues, that we introduce this bill to reaffirm the values I believe that we hold as a collective as Baltimore City. I want to make a couple remarks about this. I prepared some, but they're kind of long, so I'm going to try to edit them on the fly, something I'm not particularly good at. Donald Trump's campaign struck a shocking tone from the start. It earned him unprecedented media coverage and was seen by some as proof of his outsider status. His shocking language made him look unelectable even to experts, but many Americans, most of them white, were either unbothered or openly supportive of Trump's rhetoric. Over the decades, we have seen hard-fought but vastly insufficient progress for women, persons of color, religious minorities, and LGBTQ Americans. This progress has changed our social order and how we relate to each other. Resistance to this change leads many to dismiss critiques of Trump as political correctness, as though the term itself is an insult. We are all familiar with some of Trump's most infamous and controversial remarks in the press against women, the disabled, religious minorities, and persons of color. Trump routinely made wrong-headed statements about African-Americans in the U.S. Here in Maryland, he referred to youths in Baltimore as having, quote, "no spirit." He stated that President Barack Obama had been a divisive president for race relations after having himself led the birther movement questioning President Obama's country of origin. Trump normalized sexual assault, including his suggestion that women harassed in the workplace should just quit, and that sexual assault in the military is a consequence of allowing women to serve. Trump routinely used sexist narratives like implying Carly Fiorina could be disqualified from political office based on her physical appearance or continuing to body-shame Alicia Machado. Trump has insisted that women who get abortions should be punished. Trump called for a ban on Muslim or Arab immigration into the U.S. and for a registry system based on religion or country of origin. Trump has threatened to use political capital to pass the First Amendment Defense Act, which would roll back federal protections against the discrimination of LGBTQ persons. Trump implied that seventy percent of people are against gay marriage when discussing a homophobic comment from a Miss America contestant. The number of examples, they go on, and I'm sure we're all familiar with them. Many people have downplayed the racism of the Trump campaign by claiming that Trump's victory came from his appeal to white, working-class voters' economic concerns. Even Trump's economic argument is intertwined with racism, though. He implies that America's economic challenges are the fault of actors outside of the, quote, "real America" who aren't a part of it or who take advantage of the real America. And I could go on, but one of the, I think, most important words in this resolution is the term scapegoat. And I want to stand here today to affirm that I'm proud to stand with members of Baltimore City Council in this term as progressives and individuals and a body willing to move policy in the right direction, that the hardships we face as a country are not based on minority groups, but based on policies that we can move forward to improve the quality of life for Baltimore City, Maryland, and the United States. And we are a body of leaders in this room, and I'm proud to be here today. With that, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark.
I get that right?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This resolution is adopted. You can find the Consent Council Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Council? Motion by Councilman Dorsey, seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the Consent Council say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this is approved. The council must elect its vice president who will serve for the duration of the seventy-second term. Do I have a motion to move a nominee? Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to nominate Councilwoman Middleton as City Council Vice President. I believe that Councilwoman Middleton is obviously a seasoned veteran of this council with vast experience in leadership, both within the council, chairing committees, and outside of the council, and I think she would be a fine vice president.
Seconded by Council Vice President Reissinger. All those in favor of electing Sharon Green Middleton to serve as the council's vice president say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Sharon Green Middleton has been elected by her peers to serve as the council's vice president during the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Congratulations, Ms. Vice President. Chair recognizes Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I humbly, I'm just heartfelt right now. I just really appreciate all of you. I, first of all, want to say, Council President Young, I want to thank you for your steady leadership over the years, and I look forward to working with you and our new mayor Catherine Pugh to move the city of Baltimore forward. I am more than confident that Baltimore will become one of America's comeback cities. To our new council members, and pardon my back toward you, I welcome your drive, talent, and boundless energy that I witnessed from many of you on the campaign trail. You will find that as a councilperson, you will wear many hats in your new role as a Baltimore City Councilperson. In the eyes of your constituent, you are the city. They will expect your best efforts in making their communities and neighborhoods safe and work to improve the quality of life of the residents. There is no doubt in my mind that you all will represent your constituents well. Please know that I am here for you if you have any questions, or I might be of assistance. Again, I am here for you. It is my sincere hope that we will collectively be the engine that change for our communities. I pray that love, good health, support, and continued encouragement will be with you and your families as you serve this city. And again, I thank you all for this position.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Committee announcements, are there any committee announcements? Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I speak on behalf of the children and youth of our great city. Mr. President, I am grateful for your vision. After the unrest, you acted with urgency to pass the Children and Youth Investment Act. I'm grateful for the wisdom of my returning colleagues, and I'm grateful for the energy of my new colleagues. I know that in this seventy-second Baltimore City Council, the voices of our children will not be ignored. Therefore, I would like to schedule the first Education and Youth Committee hearing on January fifth, 2017, at four p.m. for the purposes of introducing the revised Education and Youth Committee to the public, developing an agenda for promoting the welfare of the city's schools and children, and setting forth committee protocol for future hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton. You can clap if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a public service announcement from the executive board members of the Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee. The Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee is presently accepting resumes to fill the position of delegate for the Fortieth Legislative District pending the resignation of Barbara Robinson from the Maryland House of Delegates effective upon Governor Larry Hogan signing the nomination of her appointment to Senator. To apply, one must be a registered Democratic voter in the state of Maryland, must have resided in the Fortieth District for at least one year, and be twenty-one years of age or older. Resumes for consideration must be received no later than end of business Thursday, December twenty-second, 2016. Again, that's December twenty-second, 2016. All resumes must be sent to Mrs. Betty Clark, Fortieth District Chair, Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee, P.O. Box two-three-seven-six-two, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-oh-three-dash-five-seven-six-two. Interviews will be held on Thursday, December twenty-ninth, 2016, at Ask Me, Council Sixty- Seven, located fourteen-ten Bush Street, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-three-oh, beginning at six p.m. Again, interviews will be held on Thursday, December twenty-ninth, 2016, at Ask Me, Council Sixty-Seven, located at fourteen-ten Bush Street, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-three-oh, beginning at six p.m. Applicants will be notified of their specific interview times. The seven voting members of the Fortieth District State Central Committee will vote publicly after all interviews have concluded to fill the vacancy. If you have any questions, please contact Betty Clark at four-four-three-eight-four-five-three-seven-nine-oh, four-four-three-eight-four-five-three-seven-nine-oh, or email bettyclark3604@yahoo.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. I'm first, Councilman. First of all, I want to recognize and thank all of the newly-elected members of the council on completing your first council meeting. And earlier today, you heard me give my speech that I'm looking forward to working with each one of you. I'm looking forward to forming partnerships with the organizations that I talked about so we can move this city forward. I didn't just say those words to be empty. I said them because I meant them, and they come from my heart. And I'm looking forward to working with you as we move this city forward. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise for a few reasons today. First and foremost, to say that since we last met as a council, we have had zero homicides in the city of Baltimore, leaving us with... Amen. Unfortunately, we still have had two-hundred-and-ninety-six for this year, and I would ask Council Vice President Middleton to honor a moment of silence for those people at the end of this meeting. I also rise to say, anyone watching on TV in the Second District this coming Monday from six to eight p.m. at City Hall, the Second District Night at City Hall, so everyone is welcome, and next Tuesday at Joe Square Pizza, thirty-three West North Avenue, myself along with Council, I mean, not Councilman Lord, Delegate Antonio Hayes and Delegate Corey McCray will be hosting a karaoke toy drive to benefit DSS children. So please come out, embarrass yourselves, bring a toy, so we can have some fun and make some kids' holiday a great thing. Thank you.
I want to ask Vice President Middleton to have a moment of silence for Tony Wright, a good friend of mine who succumbed to cancer today, about four o'clock. So I wanted to make sure that that is on the agenda. I also want to invite each and every one of you as council members to my children, my Christmas toys for tots, December the fifteenth, right? December the fifteenth, right here in City Hall. It's gotten so big now, we're moving some of the food and stuff up to the second floor, so, the fourth floor. So I'm asking if you come, please bring a toy, and I also suggest that if you don't buy it for your child, don't bring it for somebody else's. So I actually bring a gift that you would buy for your own child. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. And it's gonna be plenty food, good food. I don't know if we're gonna have mac and cheese for Costello, but I'm trying to see if somebody can make some.
Mr. President, members of the council, I just want to stand to say that I'm very proud that we're one of the very first city councils in the United States of America. proud that we're one of the very first city councils in the United States of America to push back and say, "Time for respect again in America." For all of us who are here and have been and will be, and thank you for the resolution. It was great to start off this new term of office in that manner. It's like, push back, ain't going to do it that way, we'll do it our way, respect, justice, fairness, balance. And you can do what you think you want to do someplace else, but the cities of this country will follow the lead of Baltimore and others who say, "We're doing it the way that respects everyone who is here." Secondly, I just want to say to all the young people who are here, who have just been sworn into office, and their families, who work so hard going door-to-door, and their staffs who are running in circles trying to find something that plugs into something else on the 5th floor. And actually, the transition, Mr. President, has been beautiful. I mean, if we have to invade Normandy again, we hope that you and Jose Achu will lead the charge. So basically, to everyone who is watching in and sitting here, I've been here an awful long time. Some people say too long. Forget it, I'm going to stay because it's a great time to be here in Baltimore, and a great time to be in the Baltimore City Council. We have energy, we have vision, we have good leadership, we even have fairly balanced committees, Mr. President. We have a good spirit of getting things done, not just talking about it, not just kind of doing it, not just almost doing it, but doing what we need in this city to bring the city back together again, keep us one city, bring us back into one city, and give us equity in economics, in education, and everything else. I'm so excited to be a small part of a big class of 2020, which is going to be the class that helps all of Baltimore turn around and go as high as the sky will permit. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Delegate Oaks, who have joined us in the back. If you just wave your hand, thank you for being here, Delegate Oaks. Also, I would like to recognize Kern R. Stokes, am I correct? Is that right? Yeah, Kern R. Stokes, who's the Director of Government Relations for the mayor. Welcome to City Hall. Chair recognized, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Council President. I also just wanted to reiterate how great it is that our council president and every member of this council has affirmed the importance of spending time and acknowledging family. And with that, on this very busy day, I don't want to forget that it is my sister Catherine Rose Dorsey's 30th birthday. Happy birthday.
All right. All right. Before I call on the Vice President, would all the family members of all the council peoples please stand? And thank you, thank you so much for your support of each and every one of the council members. We really appreciate it, because we need you. We can't do it by ourselves. We need the support from our families for this job that we have to do, because Baltimore City needs help, and we're going to roll up our sleeves, we're going to work hand-in-hand, and we're going to make Baltimore City the great city that it should be and that it is. So with that, I'll call on Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, I think we need to congratulate the former vice president that was vice president for 10 years, and he's passing the baton to me, Ed Ry Singer. Thank you, Ed.
I'm so sorry, Ed. It was like I just kicked you to the curb, wasn't it? I didn't mean to. Thank you, Ed, for all of your help and all of your support. All right.
And the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, January 9th, 2016, and we're going to do a moment of silence for the homicide victims of 2016, and also Ms. Latoya, Latonya Wright?
No, Tony Wright.
Tony Wright, Ms. Tony Wright.
Mr. Tony Wright.
Mr. Tony Wright.
There be no further business. This concludes the first meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night. Thank you.